Okay. Good evening, everybody. Most unusual, but this is the January 29th, 2024 special meeting of the Litchfield Planning Board. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll start with the roll call of members. Michael Proto, Chair.
Kate Stevens, Vice Chair.
Sam Terrell, Member.
Kimberly Queenen, Selectments Rep.
Jeremy Robitaille, Member.
Chair of the Council, Member.
You got perfect timing. Impeccable. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. With us this evening is Jayman Cowherd, Circuit Rider, and Joan McKibben, our Planning Administrator. Tonight is a public hearing on zoning. Before we get to that, I'll just open it up. Are there any, any public input on non-agenda items from the public this evening? Anything on, items not on the agenda for this evening? And seeing nobody in the audience, I will close public input on non-agenda items. And we will open up the public hearing tonight. This is, got a couple of things on for this evening. We have a public hearing first on new zoning section, 2200 dot zero zero, stormwater management ordinance. This is something new. And I don't know, Jay, if you want to start us off and maybe talk a little bit about what this is all about. And I know that you should have received copies of the ordinance in your packets, so, this evening.
Yes, so, I think Kim is here and can probably speak even better to this than I can because she has been working with this for quite some time. But essentially, we are under an EPA mandate to update our stormwater regulations on what is called the MS4 requirements. And so there's a couple of pieces of that, but in order to be in compliance, we have to do really two key things. One is to update our ordinance itself, to create, I should say, an ordinance. So this would be a new section of the ordinance, 2200, specifically addressing, as we can see, stormwater management. And the intent of this is to regulate stormwater management anywhere in town at this point. Because I think, so I'll back up just a little bit. MS4 requirements apply to what's considered the urban area of Litchfield, but I think we as a community have made the election to apply them townwide because if you were to look at a map of the urban area, it's kind of all over the place. So just for ease and really for, you know, common sense in many ways, we have chosen to regulate the whole town. So this is, because this is a townwide ordinance, this would not just apply to subdivisions coming before the planning board or site plans coming before the planning board, it would apply to all construction activity. That's why this is being proposed as an ordinance. Down the road, a separate sec, you know, piece of this will be to update the stormwater regulations that the planning board has as well. That'll be a separate exercise. This is going to be an ordinance. It will, as I said, apply townwide. And essentially, this is going to apply, it's going to be kind of a two-tiered approach, but it, this will be applying to, as I said, all development that is over an acre in town. And the language was put together by an engineering consultant that the town hired specifically to help us address MS4 requirements. I don't know if it's fair for me to put Kim on the spot, but Kim probably could speak a little bit more about the consultant and kind of the process we've gone through, if you're comfortable doing that.
Well, certainly. Kim Kleiner, our Town Administrator, is here this evening. Welcome.
Good evening. So, yeah. So, our engineer, Nick Christofy, from CEI, has been working with the town for a little over three years in various different capacities. So, at first, he was hired to do a number of inspections and testing for us in most of our catch basins. That was about two years ago. He's worked with the former Town Administrator on the MS4 report. And he sits on the Stormwater Coalition, which I do, and I believe Jay attends as well. The issue came about last year, so I had joined the town on October 4th. At that time, we were already late on our MS4 report. We did our best to make some changes and some updates that were required, but this was really one that required going to town meeting and some thorough analysis and some thought. So we put it aside. Fast forward, we received an order of compliance from the EPA and expected that they would be contacting us, as it is part of the 2017 permit. We had been working off of one that was updated in 2003, and I believe is still in use. And so they were ordering us to make the required changes and bring it to town meeting for this spring. So we must update them as to the outcome of that. But yes, this is really strengthening the stormwater requirements and providing some governance on it. We are required to report all construction activities within the town on the MS4. And we're also, if you missed it, last Board of Selectmen meeting, they also passed an illicit discharge ordinance, which then makes it a requirement that the Fire Chief, the Road Agent, and I be alerted of any illicit discharges and gives the Board of Selectmen some authority over that. So that is part of this as well. Mr. Christofy from CEI has been going through almost everything just to make sure that we are covered in all areas of stormwater. There are a few others that we are working on, but most that pertain to the Road Agent, some salt requirements. You may have heard that we are talking about using brine. So our Road Agent has been going to some required trainings, things of that sort. And we're taking guidance from New Hampshire DES as well.
Since, just to jump in a little bit on the specifics, so really the essence of what this ordinance would do is it requires that anybody who's disturbing more than an acre in area of land has to apply for a stormwater permit from the planning board. That's really the biggest new requirement. So regardless of whether you're doing a site plan or subdivision, if you're, if you're disturbing more than an acre, then you will come in for a permit. That's not something that we expect to happen a lot. You don't see too many people doing that outside, you know, of a larger development plan, but it does happen. And so that, that's really where this would apply. It does not apply to agriculture. So turning the fields, general agricultural activity, that, it would not apply.
Anybody have any questions?
So is this going to be added to the application for like a large development like that as one of the waivers or requirements necessary? We're going to have to update that application.
We, it will, it will apply to any development coming to the planning board. Right now, we do have stormwater regulations that we apply. So for the most part, people who are coming in for a subdivision or site plan are covered. But we have to update those regulations. So that is another step in our process. But this, but we will have to create an application for this. So yeah, we'll have to add this to our applications.
We also have, part of the process that was added last fall is we must give letters and fact sheets and mail those out every August to anyone who is doing development, has done development, or is scheduled to do development within the town.
So that was every August?
Every August, yes. Once a year.
And would this, if this passes in March, does that apply to applications that have already been accepted but not approved by the planning board?
So, yeah, I mean, this will apply townwide. For outside, this is kind of regardless of your subdivision and site plan process, this applies townwide.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think she means, are there any like grandfathering, you know, cases?
I don't see this as really being grandfathered, I guess. So that's something we could consider. But I don't really see this as a grandfathering issue.
Okay.
Although, as I did mention, our next step of the process will be to update our regulations. And somebody who came in before the regulations were updated, that would be, they wouldn't have to comply with those.
Okay.
Because really, these are not regulations that say you can't use your property. It's just saying that you have to manage, that, you know, you have to address the stormwater issues, you know, erosion controls, et cetera, in a certain way to enhance protections.
And I, my understanding as well, I mean, if for some reason the voters do not vote for this or it doesn't pass, that doesn't mean that this is the, the end of it. It's just, we are at least, from my understanding, we've done our due diligence and we're continuing to try and comply with the permitting process. And we will, I assume, will continue to do so. Because obviously, you know, the town has already been served with some notice, so. So the fact that, if it does pass, great, but if it doesn't for some reason, that basically this will be, this will be an ongoing process to try to get it to come into compliance, so, my understanding. We just can't not do it. And then, you know, when the EPA says, well, where's your, where's your MS4, it was like, well, we, we didn't do it. Well, that's not, you know, that's not an answer that they're going to like, so. And that can have consequences. So at least if we're diligently doing something to show them that, you know, we are trying to get this passed, that's, that's a good thing, so.
And I think it's fair to say that the, you know, the reason why we're doing this, I think now, is because we are in order to do it from the EPA.
Right.
But the rationale, you know, for this is that we've come a long way, you know, as a nation through the Clean Water Act in addressing point pollution sources and cleaning up sewage discharges and industrial discharges and some of the worst contamination. Now, the principal contamination sources are non-point sources. They're coming from runoff. They're coming from runoff that's going into stormwater systems. That's why. So that's kind of the rationale here is to try to reduce contamination to our surface waters, our groundwaters as well, through discharges of contaminants into the stormwater system.
And we're taking this very seriously at the town level. So I'm sure you've heard about our stormwater asset management program that we are, we put into effect. We received a grant from New Hampshire DES. The Highway Department has been out there with a different engineer from CEI, kind of putting all these assets, all these catch basins and things, onto a map into GIS. They were out there, they were testing, they were studying, they were measuring all summer long. It's been quite a project. So that we can put together something which the Capital Improvements Committee has asked for, for a few years now, as far as what is it going to cost the town to manage these assets? And it is quite expensive. You know, there's everything from general sweep cleaning of your roads to the annual testing and, and removal of discharge and things. So it is quite, quite an expensive process for the town and something we need to look at going forward.
Need a motion to move to?
Yes, so obviously, this is a public hearing. If we are going to be putting this on the warrant for deliberative, we do need to vote on this tonight. My understanding, so. Anyone wants to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the updated stormwater management ordinances to town meeting.
Okay. I have a motion by Kate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Kim. Any further discussion?
Do we have the members of the public time for this one?
Well, this is a, it's a public hearing, so it's open. I kind of opened it at the beginning. So if anybody wants to come in, they can certainly, you know, talk about it. But seeing there's nobody here. I mean, certainly, you know, yeah. Unless anybody has any other questions. All right. All right. All those in favor of the motion of moving this ordinance to the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes six zero zero. Okay, very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing on the proposed impact fee schedule. So I'll open it up now to public hearing on proposed impact fee. Jay, if you want to start us off?
Yes, so I'm going to try to zoom in on this a little bit more. So the Board member called that last spring, we completed a impact fee study, an update of the town's existing impact fee schedule. That was based on the CIP that had been adopted at that time, so the prior CIP. And there were three areas where we made recommendations for updates: school, police, and fire. And those were essentially because each of those had significant capital facilities that had been proposed. In the case of the fire station, an existing bond that the town was paying for. So in essence, in each of these cases, what we looked at is what percentage of the capital cost of each of these items could reasonably be attributed to new growth? And then based on that, came up with an update to the fee schedules for each of these categories. So I'd say probably about, I want to say, six months ago, a little bit longer, the Planning Board did vote to recommend moving those three items forward to the Board of Selectmen. And there was a public hearing held at that time. The decision was made to wait until the current CIP, which was in process then, was completed. So that was completed the beginning of December. And then on the basis of the updated CIP, we revisited the numbers. And the one that changed and changed significantly was schools. And that was because the cost of the new elementary school went up rather significantly. So on the basis of that, the, the proposed impact fee, and I'll just use a single-family housing example. Previously, we had recommended for a single-family detached dwelling, it would be $4,311. That increased to $5,250. It also increased for other types of housing, such as multifamily, from $2,207 to a proposed $2,451. So of course, since this is, you, these are updated recommendations to the schedule, a public hearing is required, and then if it is the will of the Board, the Board could make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that the updated schedule be adopted, in which case the Board of Selectmen, if they wished, could in fact agenda it and choose to pass it or not.
Ms. Kleiner, do you have any questions about the impact fees? Anybody have anything they want to add?
Can you explain, I think you explained this once before, why did we go from units of per dwelling unit to per square foot living area?
Per square foot was really, there was just no good data. We have good data on the number of single-family homes and the number of homes, you know, multifamily homes, et cetera. And we also have reasonably good data on estimates of school generations, so the number of schoolchildren that are generated per unit. But there's no good database or breakdown based on square footage. So we found no real reasonable way of saying a 2,000-square-foot home, you know, has X number of children versus a 2,500-square-foot home. There's just no data that supports that. So we simply went by unit type. And I think that it generally does play out. Certainly, a very small home might. But most of the homes in Litchfield, you know, you might have a larger family room, et cetera, but for the most part, the generation range would be about the same. So that's, that's why.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think this looks good. It's, it's necessary in our ordinances that we update the impact fees annually. So this is long overdue. We attempted in 2023 to update them, but that was tabled by the Board of Selectmen. So here is, I guess, our attempt for 2024.
Okay.
And I hope to see this every winter with the updating of the CIP every year also.
Would you like to make a motion to?
There's, I don't know.
Unless there's anybody else?
Any other discussion? I'll make a motion to recommend the proposed impact fee schedule to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. I have a motion by Kate. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion by Kate to recommend it.
And for the discussion. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes six zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on.
Well, I have one question though.
Yeah?
Sorry. The attachment with this, we were going to make a change about determining the impact fees, the update study. It looks like you did something on the bottom here on page two. We wanted, so 2015 on was the methodology in this here. But we were going to add something for 2014 in the past for the impact fees. On page two, excuse me, one, let me go down here. In the summary?
Yes, this shows, this shows the comparison previously. So we tried to do, show, because previously, it was all done by square footage.
Yes.
So that's what that second page table was attempting to do.
I'm talking about the update survey, the update study, not, not the spreadsheet, but the one under it in the portal.
The 21-page document.
Yep, the 21-page document, yeah.
Yeah.
So page two, technically, after introduction, you get section two, the summary and proposed impact fee schedule.
Yes.
So I think you did a little bit down here. Say, you had the table one and table two, but if you page down a little more, you can see you have some notes there.
Yes.
Okay. So up a little bit more. So adopted fee schedule 2015, you have the link, right? So you can click in. And then we had what the, what we were going to do in 2014, right? So anything on that list prior, on the SIP plan prior to 2014 was supposed to follow the BCM rules, right?
That's right.
And anything from 2015 on, we're going to follow this one here, the link that you put in, right?
Yes.
All right. So that's what you did, that's what we asked for last week, I think, right?
That's, that's my recollection.
Yes, I know. I was looking at the notes and they didn't really mention it, but it's here. That's all I care about. So that, so, so you understand, Kim. Remember, we were discussing, what was his name? Mr. Mayberry, who the state uses. So if anything on the SIP plan that's older, 2014 had, what qualified to get on the SIP plan? And it followed those, that big 90-page document or whatever you had before. So anything now follows this 21-page document or anything new coming forward. So just so you know that, does that make sense, or?
Understand this.
Yeah. So above this little drawing here, can you, can see some, mind scrolling up a little bit, Jay? Yeah, oops. That's above it, it's page one, I think, on the document here, right there.
Yeah, that's it.
So we added the footing at the bottom here. Because somebody comes in your office and says, hey, can impact fees pay for this, right?
I'm not quite sure that the document changes what the impact fees can be used for.
It doesn't. This is just, this is a reference.
Right.
This document doesn't change that.
I think what the impact fees can be used for are well-described by statute. And so those really, I, I would just be careful in having boards or committees think that that has changed because there are things that will carry on from that old document where there were certain facilities or items that were deficient and not maintained back at that old date. And if they still, if they haven't been since then, those still won't qualify for the impact fees. So I'm not sure it's the use of the fees that change as much as the
Schedule.
The schedule and, and what projects and how we are calculating the assessment of those on future projects. Am I correct in my thinking?
Yes. So we still, but we still have the analysis that was done in the prior ones that we will still have to reference for the fees that have already been collected.
So those are what those are.
Because that's what we did. We tried to split them up so people could get to the information.
Right. So we put those in there exactly, so that people could find that, older studies, if they want to.
Yes. And for the most part, we've, you know, we're very up to date with the impact fees. Anything that should have been returned is returned, I mean, is updated monthly to kind of go through and see where we are. A lot of the impact fees have been used for projects that qualified because they were adding opportunities and new growth, for new growth of Litchfield. So I think we are in a very good position right now, but to Ms. Stevens' point, they needed to be updated as far as the projects going forward that certainly do qualify for new growth. I'm assuming the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
I agree. And thank you for adding that. I appreciate it. Because it wasn't in the minutes, I wanted to make sure it was there.
So the next meeting is February 12th, and so if the Board approves them, we'll make sure they're on there.
So good. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I have committee reports. Any reports from any committees? Jeremy, do you have anything about economic?
No, I was sick at the last meeting, so I did not attend. But our next meeting is actually coming up Wednesday. Wednesday? It's Wednesday. At 6:30, right here.
Okay. Kim?
The Energy Committee, we actually used your questionnaire that you had developed. And we looked at another town that we had liked, and we're merging those and adding our own ideas to that. So we're working on that survey and for the economic development, yeah. That will be, I believe, Wednesday coming up. All right, so you're still on me. SIP meets after town meeting. I'll let you do the Energy Committee. I'll let you do the Energy Committee. The Board of Selectmen is finalizing Warren articles. Uh, and RPC, if I have this right, Jay, we're having a full Commissioner meeting in February instead of March.
Yeah, we moved March to February.
So we'll be meeting on February seventeenth, seven P M., Thirty Temple Street in Nashua. And that was for a due date for DOT, we had to have some votes in before
The Transportation and
Our usual March, so we had to move it up.
Everything's about hearing deadlines nowadays.
And we have our town meeting coming up Saturday, February third, which is this weekend, ten A M., Campbell High School at the gym. Oh, and we had our primary election in case everybody missed it on January twenty-third. It was a big one in there last week. And that's all I have.
Sam, you have anything on Energy?
Yep, the Energy Committee met on January twenty-fourth, and, um, we have a Warren article out to be voted on in the March Town Meeting uh, to adopt community power as a, uh, third-party, uh, group to supply electricity to the town. And it was brought to our attention that there's been some false information spreading around on social media about what the plan is. And so I'd like to clear a few things up quickly. Um, I put together just four quick points about the plan. So number one, the goal of the program is to lower the electricity rates for the residents of Litchfield. There's no one in-town government benefiting from this plan. Uh, it's simply to just lower electricity rates. The program guarantees lower rates at launch, so for the first month of the program, you will have a guaranteed lower rate than the ever-source rate.
Sam, quick point real quick?
Yes.
Is it for generation, not for distribution, correct?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, distribution will still be ever-source.
Yeah, okay.
Um, third point, um, if the ever-source price does become lower than the program price, it's very easy to opt out of this program, back into ever-source. You can go to the website or call the phone number that we'll provide later on, but it's very easy to opt out. And if ever-source drops below the price, you can go to the lower price very easily. You're not locked in, there's no penalties, there's no fees to change. And last, if you're already supplied by a third-party energy provider, you will not be automatically opted into this program. So I think those are the four major points I want to make to clear up any confusion from the town, social media.
And it is not the New Hampshire coalition of power.
Right, it's Litchfield Community Power.
I equated the two, and that was incorrect. I've since corrected those comments.
So, um, so, yeah, we have, our next meeting is February twenty-ninth, and, um, we'll be discussing ideas for reducing energy consumption in town and for increasing efficiency, uh, for the town buildings. And so if anyone wants to come to the meeting, uh, on February twenty-ninth with some ideas, you're welcome to come along.
Well, thank you very much for the information, that's good. Um, Conservation Commission meeting is going to be on February eighth at six thirty here in Town Hall, I believe, right, Jeremy?
I believe so.
Okay. Um, I've not heard anything from the Lower Merrimack Local Advisory Committee. Um, CIP will be meeting probably in the beginning of April this year after, um, deliberative. Um, and that is all I have, Kate, do you have anything?
The Budget Committee had their final meeting this past Thursday, what day is that, the twenty-fifth? Um, the video is up on YouTube and it has a lot of information about, um, especially about school warrant, number one, for the proposed elementary school project. And then we also, um, made some adjustments to, or the Board of Selectmen needed to make some adjustments to the, um, plow truck lease, no, I'm sorry, highway department, um, employee warrant, so we had to discuss that also, that, there was a lot of good discussion around that as well. Um, as Kim said, deliberative is Saturday, February third at ten A M., um, at the Campbell High School Gymnasium. And the filing period for town and school office candidates is open right now, um, closes Friday, February second at Town Hall, which I believe closes at four P M., right? So, uh, February second, four P M. is your deadline to apply for an open seat, uh, um, whether in the town or the school district. And while we're on that subject, Planning Board could always, and the Zoning Board could always use, um, additional members and alternates.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Um, next item is approval of minutes for January second, two thousand twenty-four and January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, I know we, I believe we tabled the January second meeting minutes last time. Um, does anybody have any questions, concerns, or about the minutes?
You have an email about the minutes?
I do. Can I read? Maybe I missed it. Unless it's the same one.
I don't think they've been changed.
No, this was the one, okay, I see.
It's from a resident.
Yeah.
And, uh, business owner, rather.
Right. Okay, well, I'll, I'll read it into the record. Um, this is from Wayne Caulfield, uh, Funway, uh, Mel's Funway Park, says, good afternoon, this is dated January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Good afternoon, Chairman Krodo, after reviewing tonight's agenda for the Town of Litchfield Planning Board meeting, I, uh, that was on January, must have been January sixteenth, the week of the January sixteenth. I would request that you and the entire board give serious consideration to not approving the January second, two tw- two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes without modification. Specifically, I would draw your attention to page two, paragraph two of the proposed meeting minutes. Paragraph is concluded with the following statement, quote, "The discussion appeared to conclude with Mr. Charbonneau had expressed frustration with the broader issues associated with spooky world and zoning matters," close quote. This is not factual and is a complete misrepresentation of the comments made during the meeting and what opinions were expressed by Mr. Charbonneau. Reviewing the video recording of the January second, two thousand twenty-four meeting, Mr. Charbonneau's frustrations directed towards his observations of Rose Medina disobeying a cease and desist order issued by the Town of Litchfield on October fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Therefore, I would respectfully request Planning Board members not approve the January second, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes until the minutes are changed. To accurately reflect Mr. Charbonneau's statements and concerns, please read this email into the record at the Planning Board meeting. Sincerely yours, Wayne Caulfield, Member of Mel's Funway Park, LLC, four fifty-four Charles Bancroft Highway, Litchfield, New Hampshire. So.
Were they done, or, I don't know, we, we have to, is this the original ones that were there from before?
It looks like it is the originals, yes.
So I do have some issues as well.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think we need maybe shelve them one more week, is that all right, if we do that?
I think we need to give specific instructions.
Well, I, what do you think?
Cause
We're gonna have a non-public?
Cause it's given specific
Yeah, uh, hold on one sec, there's a, yep.
Kim Platner, Town Administrator, I was copied on, on Mr. Caulfield's email, and, um, I did go back and review the tape. Um, I do believe Mr. Caulfield is correct. Um, there was no reference by Mr. Charbonneau of spooky world. Um, so I do believe that the minutes need to be adjusted, at least for that section. Um, there may be some other sections that, um, I did not address, but at least for that last sentence, um, it was clear that Mr. Charbonneau was referencing the fact that there hadn't been, um, approval for the parking. Um, and although the parking may, um, serve spooky world, spooky world itself was never mentioned. But I think unless there are specifics, um, to Jared's point, um, on what sentences need to be amended, if there are any others, um, that you'd need to table them and get those specifics.
What the specific language meant.
I know that Mr. Sullivan, um, will look for a motion to amend and say, you know, what line you'd like amended and you'd like it amended to. Um, and then he, he will make those changes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I will do that, but I'm gonna have to watch the whole tape again. I find this, I, I'm being honest, I found it whitewashed to clean up things, and I understand that. But the words amelioration, elucidate, acumen, I don't say those words.
There were almost three paragraphs of
Exactly.
Dictionary.
And I, I, so I, I don't know, it has a different tone and feel, so I, I don't even know where to start. I would like them redone again, so I can actually look at them. If not, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be writing the minutes if, if that's what it's gonna come down to. So I understand some things might need to be cleaned up, that's fine, but this is, to me, is different than what I usually see. So I can't give you a specific, I wish I could, cause usually I do, you see me, I'm the one that does it, right? This one, I'm like
We had an unusual amount of back and forth, doesn't that mean that was not quite
Yes.
For our normal meeting style, essentially, so.
And that's okay, I don't mind if you clean things up, but this was, I don't know who, I don't know who it was, so, it wasn't me.
I make a motion to table this till next week, so we can all do a review and try to give some kind of red lines or highlights to adjust this.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Jeremy to table the January second meeting minutes. I have a second by Kate, do I have any further discussion?
So, how, what is our plan in the meantime, while, while it's tabled? Are we going to all thoroughly review every paragraph of this?
Well, I think there has to be a review probably of what was the, uh, the, the video or the tape.
Yeah.
Um, to find out where, um, where the change would, would be. And obviously, it's in that particular paragraph regarding, um, said by Mr. Charbonneau supposedly. Um, so we would have to, we had to fix that, or find out if it can be fixed, or if it can be amended to reflect the original meaning or intent.
Intent, yeah.
I wouldn't think.
Like, how detailed do the minutes need to be, because this is very far from a transcript. This is a summary. How summarized are minutes allowed to be while being accurate to the records?
Well, I mean, certainly, um, I know there, you know, in the past, sometimes what happens is that something's said, or something comes out, and then it, you know, whether it's Kim or someone, or someone else on the board may have an issue, um, because maybe that's not specifically what she meant when she said something, and she wants to clarify it, so, um, I don't know. And this, in, in this instance, it sounds like there's some, um, um, language that, I don't know, it doesn't seem to, to jive, I guess, with, um, what was reflected at the meeting, so, I mean, I think it's perfect, I mean, it's perfectly fine to, to do that. Um, you know, obviously, we want the minutes to be clear, and, you know, I, I, you know, avoid any ambiguities or whatever, you know, for purposes of, um, you know, public, um, information, and, cause they are public information.
It might make sense, um, I know there's some overhead by doing this, but it might make sense for some comments to be made over email for us to review. Uh, obviously, that would have to, I think, go, uh, that's public information when we email the entire board, so that would have to be put on the, probably put on the agenda, right?
And there could be no back and forth. Right, cause, I mean, the, the, the implication for ninety-one A is there, so you don't want to, you don't want to cross that, so, uh, they have to be careful with that. Um, so, yeah, I mean, certainly, um, you know, I think, you know, in this case, I think it's just a matter of tabling it and making, you know, going back and reviewing the record of, you know, the video record, and making sure that we can figure out, you know, where, how we can, you know, it does, most of this can jive with that, and if it does, uh, great, if it doesn't, then it just needs to be changed and amended, and I think we can do that.
This, it would, the ideal way would be if this was a Google document or some other sort of document that we could comment on interactively, that would be the ideal way. I don't know.
And, yeah, and again, I, you know, I'm, I'm not a ninety-one A expert in the law, but certainly, I think there are certain parameters that we have to follow when it comes to ninety-one A. And, um, I would just be cautious of that in terms of, you know, using Google Docs or whatever to, to try to, I, I, I think it would cause a, you know, that might be an issue. I don't think we want to go down that road, so, um, I think we need to be as transparent as we can, and so.
I, I think if I could to, you know, to your earlier question, uh, they don't need to be a transcript. Um, they really should, though, be sufficiently detailed so that you could understand the rationale of decisions that were made. So that there's enough there, so that it's just like, where did that, you know, come from? Uh, so that's, that's kind of not a great answer, but, cause it's always gonna be a, a summary unless it's a transcript, but, you know, there, there should be that kind of, the essence of the conversation is there, and you, you get a sense, cause sometimes down the road, you're looking for, you're trying to understand what was intended by something, and just having enough there that it kind of backs it up, right?
Should we vote on that now?
Okay, so any further discussion?
So I, I, just instruction, um, is Matt gonna look at this, or do we all look at it ourselves, or both, or I'm not sure what should happen?
Don't we have to do it first?
Do we do it first? We can do it first.
I mean, I, I don't think, I mean, people can go and review the video, yes. Um, I mean, obviously, I, I would think if, if Matt is the one that did the, the minutes, um, perhaps he should take the opportunity to go a- and review it, um, cause he is the minute taker. But certainly, you know, you folks want, want to look at the video, they're certainly welcome to do that, and, you know, but again, um, you know, we just want to make sure that, um, yeah.
If the minute taker is going to review this and potentially make, uh, proposed amendments, it would definitely be good to see that before next meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, cause then, that would prevent us from having to table it another week.
So, yeah, I guess that's the answer to that question. Anything else? All right, we do have a motion, um, all those in favor of tabling the January second, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, abstained, motion passes six zero zero, thank you. Let's try the January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes, anybody have any questions on those? And would anyone like to make a motion for those?
Uh, can I just, correction on, under number two, application for consolidation of three lots, there on the first page, and it should be slash subdivision application, twenty-eight lots. He says that further down, but it's not in the heading.
Right. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the two, January, uh, sixteen, two thousand twenty-four minutes as amended. So moved. I have a motion by Ja- uh, Jared, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kim, any further discussion? All right, take a vote, all those in favor of approval of the January sixteen, two thousand twenty-four minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Okay, this is gonna be interesting, one, two, three, four. Um, motion passes four zero two. Thank you. All right. Um, any other business this evening? Jay, do you have anything?
I do not.
Joan, do you have anything?
Um, just a plan for you to sign.
Okay. All right. Um, so we will, um, go back to our regular meeting schedule in in February. Um, thank you for joining us for this special meeting tonight, um, regarding the public hearing on zoning amendments and articles. And, you know, please, uh, get out to deliberative next, next weekend, um, for the town. And, um, is it the following week for the school?
Yes.
Yeah, the following Saturday, right?
February tenth.
February tenth for the school.
At ten A M. in the auditorium.
Okay. All right. Um, and, um, we will see you then. So I thank you, have a good evening, good night.